Good morning. It's Wednesday, November 1st, 2017. We're in the Senator Herring Room for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting at 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. Welcome, everybody. We start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item is public comment, and we have no one signed up, so we will move right to the consent calendar. Commissioner Carlson, if you're ready.
All right, I'll get my glasses out here. All right. All right, Mr. Chair, today we have three items under consent that I will move, and I'll read them. The first is a Clerk's Office, approved an order appointing Bob Brighi, Jennifer Sasaki, Paul Allen, Gerald Baumann, Victoria Palmer, Susan Thompson, Jack Yarborough, and Micah Moskowitz to the Marion County Board of Property Tax Appeals with terms ending June 30th, 2018. Under Community Services, approved an order appointing Ron Hayes as an honorary member of the Marion County Children and Families Commission. And under Public Works, scheduled a public hearing for November 29th, 2017, to consider amendments to the Marion County Urban Zone Code to permit accessory dwelling units.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? I don't hear any, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Action, we have three items. I've had a special request, and for CCTV's needs, we're going to move number four to first. I don't know what it's about, but considerations have been suggested. Consider approval of the revised Health Advisory Board bylaws. Carrie Muller, if you're ready.
I can't see the bylaws, so can you open them up?
Yep.
My computer's just starting up.
We did catch a change last week, hopefully I got that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carrie Muller, Marion County Health Department. We're here this morning with a request for approval of our Health Board Advisory bylaws. The Health Advisory Board serves two functions. It serves as advisory board to the Board of Commissioners through our local health department on public health and the Subcommittee for Community Mental Health Program. So we're here today as a sort of standard procedure with a request for approval on an update of our bylaws. There's really nothing substantially changed. We just needed to bring it for you as the bylaws indicate, so. The Health Advisory Board, you made appointments in the last couple of board sessions on new board members. We're very excited about that. Commissioner Cameron's going to join us. And the Health Advisory Board is engaging with us around our health department's strategic planning process, so it's a good time for us, and I'm very excited about the work that we're engaging in. So for your consideration, our bylaws.
All right, Commissioner Carlson, I know you have an interest to read anything you want to do.
I do, I just want, just give me a minute, and I'll...
Mr. Chair, I will note that since last week, and one of our public members pointed out that we needed to change the word from "board" to "public participation" to "broad" public participation, and that has been done.
Ha.
On the last paragraph.
Thank you.
So, my suggestion, here's why we can consider taking this, if he could do it, so when we get to the county goals...
They look pretty good, so.
All right.
No complaints are mine.
Commissioner Carlson says good, therefore would you make a motion, Commissioner Cameron?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will move that we approve the revised Health Advisory Board bylaws.
I will second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the revised Health Advisory Board bylaws. Anything else? Are any of you in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. So now you can go back to work. Is that what it's all about?
We can talk about that later.
Thank you. Shall we move back to item one, under Business Services, consider approval of an order appointing Sarah Miller and reappointing Richard Berger, Steve Bergman, Jan Calloway, and Carrie Klosterman to Marion County Compensation Board with terms ending October 31st. Yes?
No, they're just passing paper down because my computer is still configuring.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Lisa Miller, Volunteer Services Coordinator with Business Services. We're here this morning with a recommendation for several reappointments and an appointment of a new member for our Compensation Board. Our Compensation Board is made up of three to five members who are knowledgeable in personnel and compensation management. Purpose of this board is to determine the compensation schedule for our county elected officials. Our members that we bring forward today come highly recommended. Our four returning members, Richard Berger, Stephen Bergman, Jan Calloway, and Carrie Klosterman, were not able to be here this morning but are very willing to serve again on this board. And our newest member that we bring for appointment is Sarah Miller, who is here today to introduce herself.
Good morning. I see her comment. Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, my name's Sarah Miller. I'm a resident of Marion County. I live in Silverton. I am recently severed from state government service. I spent 13 years in various capacities. I've appeared before several of you in other professional jobs I've had. I think the most relevant experience to the Compensation Board was I served as Mike Jordan's deputy, as the statewide deputy chief operating officer, for about three years. And for six months of that, I acted as the state's interim chief human resource officer, where I oversaw all of the work that DAS does in support of making state government run and operate. I've spent more than 10 years in management service positions. I understand intimately the drivers from a compensation perspective, and was frankly looking for a way to reignite my public service heart. And so this opportunity came across, and I put my name in, and Ms. Miller said, "Looks like it'd be a good fit." So happy to answer any questions about my direct experience if it's relevant, happy to have the opportunity to appear in front of you for consideration.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions?
Well, thank you for being here, and thank you for your service. And my computer is finally up, so I am now not distracted by the computer problem, so I apologize for that earlier. I just want to say, being on the Compensation Board is such an important function. It's required by law. Elected officials don't set their own salaries. In a sense, the Compensation Board comes up with a recommendation, and then we, as the Budget Committee actually, then set that salary. So we have three citizen members along with the Board of Commissioners in Marion County that serve in that role. And, you know, we've had some interesting conversations around compensation generally in Marion County and compensation of elected officials, what the comparators ought to be. We had four that were required, actually they're required for our strike-prohibited unions, that we were using countywide, and then we spent a lot of money on a consultant, and we came up with, I think, nine or seven or something like that. And then that didn't work very well because it was too slanted towards the smaller counties, and we weren't remaining competitive, so we went back to the four after all that. So you'll get to learn about all of our ins and outs of compensation, but hoping that you can help us make sure that we're going down the straight and narrow path.
Appreciate that perspective, Commissioner Carlson. I am curious about the application of the new equity pay bill in the work that the Commission will do this year. I understand from my friends who remain in state government that it has created some unintended complexities in the evaluation of things. So I don't know that it's relevant for the work that we'll do, but if it is, I'm briefed up and curious about the policy implications of that, so.
Well, I've got to ask, I don't know what that is. So what is it?
Mr. Chair, as I understand it, Governor Brown signed into law after the last legislative session a bill that requires equitable consideration for salaries based on things like gender equity in some cases, but also experienced tenure, professional certifications. And so state government is going through a process where they have to evaluate all of their compensation in relation to the new legislation. And so they're making corrections on new hires, and then doing retrospective application of that law to their current population. So like I said, I'm not exactly clear that it applies in this circumstance, but it'll be an interesting conversation to have with me.
Thinking as a white male, I may have to start paying to be here.
That means you can't pay me less as a Commissioner, even if I'm a third vice chair or whatever.
All right. Mr. Chair, thank you. Sarah, it's great to see you over here.
Yeah.
And your mentioning of something that happened over in the building that may cause confusion. That never has happened before, so appreciate your service, and not only to the state but coming back here.
Thanks.
And, well, you made a comment about being paid, having to be paid to be here?
Yeah, no, I pay to be here.
Pay to be here? Okay.
Is that a good idea? You like it, don't you? Okay. But, you know, on a serious note, Sarah, I see, you know, you have this, you've been working HR and class and compensation, so this is all, old hat to you, and I'm sure you'll bring some good insights to the committee. I'm really happy you're here.
Appreciate the opportunity, Commissioners.
Did I cut you off?
No, you're good.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion then? All right, so I would move approval of the order that appoints Sarah Miller and reappoints Richard Berger, Steve Bergman, Jen Calloway, and Carrie Klosterman to the Marion County Compensation Board with terms ending October 31st, 2018.
I'll second that motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the order appointing Sarah Miller, Richard Berger, Steve Bergman, Jan Calloway, and Carrie Klosterman to the Marion County Compensation Board. Any further discussion? Any here and then, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next item's under Community Services. We consider approval of a contract for services with Ingles and Associates in the amount of $727,635 for Marion County Fair Coordination Services through September 30th, 2022. Tammy Getch is here, and go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Tamara Getch, Direct for Community Services. Our department oversees the contract for event services for the Marion County Fair. This contract is a five-year contract that secures us in having event coordination services provided to the fair board to help them put together the fair and to coordinate all the little pieces that goes along with putting on an event such as the fair. For those who are watching today's presentation, you may look at that number, $727,000-plus dollars, and think, "I want to go into the fair event coordination service. That's a pretty good pay." I just want to be really clear that this contract is a contract that includes lots of details that the event coordinator goes to securing services, activities, they go to meetings, et cetera. Their base pay for those services for the 12 months is across seven payments, and they are $35,000 for those coordination services. The balance of the resources that are included in this contract are for the event coordinator to secure contracts for smaller activities, such as fair walkabout events, bringing in coordination for permitted activities like the jumping houses and the slides, and bringing in a rodeo, helping with securing things like fly ball, et cetera. So we have about $145,000 to $200,000 of activities that our fair event coordinator helps to bring together through contracts in which she manages, her company manages, on its own, on the county's behalf and the fair board's behalf. So in order for us to pay for those things, her contract is not only her base pay, but also these fair board-approved expenditures. And she's only reimbursed for those costs once the fair board has approved an expenditure. I do have to say that this is our second round, working with the Ingles and Associates, and they do a fabulous job for us. We have just initiated an intentional review of each of our major contractors, and she really has done a marvelous job in helping the fair board secure new activities, create new visions, looking for ways that we can improve the layout of our fair. And I can say with confidence that I can send Ingles and Associates to meetings on the county's behalf and know that the fair's interests are really at the table at all times. When in question, she will give us a call and really communicate with us repeatedly until something is resolved. They've been a really, a great pleasure to work with. So present this contract with you, to you for consideration, and giving them a two thumbs up.
Wonderful. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Tammy, thank you for bringing this forward. I just want to clarify, because in the beginning, your opening statements about how this payment and on page 12 of the contract, it actually outlines that every other, as you mentioned, $35,000, six times a year, it's actually, just anybody who's watching, it's $5,857, six times a year, plus one payment of that amount.
Correct.
So, and then at the bottom of page 12, it talks about the $522,635 of reimbursed expenses outlined in Exhibit A.
Correct.
So it's really clear in the contract.
It is.
The $35,000 a year is what they are being paid to coordinate all this information. And I would have to say, they've done a great job the last two years that I've been, has it been two years?
They have done...
Or three years.
Three years, and this is their fourth.
Okay. And then the last question I have, has the fair board recommended approval of this contract? Have they seen it?
Yes, they have. We were in discussion with them the last couple of months about the renewal of the contract. They gave us the nod to move forward with this contract's being secured, and the fair board is actually meeting this Sunday to begin its planning, in which upon approval of this contract, the Ingles will be in attendance of that retreat.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Tammy. And this is the event coordination contract, right?
Correct.
And there's going to be a different contract for sponsorships, is that correct?
Yes, marketing and sponsorships.
Right. And just wanted to say that I've worked with Jill and Scott, actually, both of them, and they have done an excellent job, I think. This last fair that we had was, I mean, everyone said it was the best fair ever, right? We always say that, but it really was, I think, a very organized and well-done event. And I was looking at the fair report that Denise puts together that goes to the Oregon Fairs Association, and it talks about the, there's 722 volunteers, 11,300-plus volunteer hours. A second. The paid gate was $83,670, which I think was a record, right? Pretty close to a record if it wasn't. $24,000 in attendance, cash sponsorships, almost $58,000, plus $40,000 in trade. And then a lot of exhibits, 621 adult exhibits, 4,218 4-H and FFA exhibits, 249 open-class youth exhibits. So it's a, it's gone, I can just, and I've done this before, but when you go back to those, that are, first fair that I was involved with in, what would that have been, 2003, right? And the amount of attendance, and I think it was a guess on their part, was 16,000. The amount of sponsorships was, I think, in the $4,000 range. It was very, very small. And I know their marketing budget was about $3,000. So it has grown from what it was to a very well-organized event, which I think our mission as the fair is to make sure that we have, what are we talking, pro-social events, that we have family, fun family activities, things that the youth can get involved with. And we have an event that we can be proud of, so I'm very pleased to support the contract.
Yeah, I think we're really fortunate to have a company like Ingles and Associates that takes an interest in our fair and has the expertise that they exhibit, and the demonstration of their abilities comes time and time again. So we're really pleased with the contract for your consideration.
So, you ready for motion, Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve a contract for services with Ingles and Associates in the amount of $727,000, $727,635 for Marion County Fair Coordination Services through September 30th, 2022.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, we approve the contract for services with Ingles and Associates, just because I haven't commented, I too am very pleased with both the fair and the job they do. Just see it going up. Very pleased. All right, call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Okay, the last action item, and Carrie, if I realized you were going to be involved in this, I would have made it, no, okay, fine. It's under Health, we consider approval of an order increasing the vital records fee schedule effective January 1st, 2018. Rick Sherman, good morning.
Commissioners, what I'm here to do is to request the $5 increase per birth and death certificates for copies only, not the original, which is already $25 apiece, and still bring up the copies to $25 each. This is a requirement that the Oregon Health Authority for their vital records requires that all the counties be equal to what they charge. And if we fail to do this, they will take over the process of selling the birth certificates and death certificates, and we will not get any compensation for that. Any questions?
Other questions?
Okay, let's back up. So what is this, come on, Rick, we've got people listening, and so don't assume they're just talking to us, you're talking to everybody. So start at the beginning.
What it is, is the state requires the counties to provide birth and death, well, vital records, which does the birth and death certificates. What happens is that a couple of years ago, three years ago, the state increased their license, their fees for birth and death certificates to $25 for the primary, and then all copies were $20 each. They then at that time also noted that in 2018, they were going to raise up the copy fee to 25 to equal the regular one. So what it'll do is it'll charge, it'll increase the copies for both birth and death certificates to $25 each, no matter how many copies they buy. The birth certificates, there's not a lot of extra copies sold for that, but death certificates, there is quite a few there. That'll increase the fees there.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Rick, for being here. Are these copies, are they like a certified, are they notarized so that it's actually, it's not, we're not just making a copy of...
No, no, these are certified copies that they can give to their, like a death...
Insurance, that's why there's some, okay.
And all other records.
Okay. And just the last question, so what you said is that we are, I guess we have the option, we have an option to either raise the fee because the state raised their fee, or to just let them do it because they do a better job than we do? I didn't hear you say that, but...
Yes, that's true. They will take over that part of it.
So now are we actually doing, we're actually doing these copies and certifying them, et cetera?
Yes, yes.
So if I, if I call the county or whatever, I can get that that day, or is, what's the turnaround for it?
It's usually about a week. Death certificates, we can deal with. Birth certificates, we only do the first six months of their age. After six months, the state takes over all of that.
Okay. I'm curious, Mr. Chair, if I may follow. So where's this being done? Is it being done in the Health Department, and that's where I would go to pick it up?
Yes.
Or it would be mailed to me for $25, or what?
Either way, we'll either mail it to you, or you can pick it up, however.
I got one other question I'm thinking of. So if you're born in another county, you would take care of those, too?
No, only in our county.
I see. Okay. All right.
All right, so I will move the order increasing the vital records fee schedule effective January 1, 2018.
I guess I'll second the motion, because I don't want the state to take over any more of our business.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve an order that increases vital records for Marion County. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Why are you struggling with this?
Well, are we done? Motion passes, okay?
Yes, the motion passed.
So it just strikes me that if we wanted to charge less, because we do it ourselves, right? If we wanted to charge less than the state does, we can't keep doing it. They're mandating that we charge what they charge.
Uh huh.
That's, where's the local control here, right? I mean, it's like another big brother, I guess legal counsel's looking at me right now out of the corner of my eye, I can see Gloria, and it's like, bring on a writ, right? I mean, remember that day, we talked about this? It's like, what if we only wanted to charge $20 for a copy?
You know, it is such a chore figuring out fees. I mean, we have sat for hours and hours doing scales, and they have to figure out what it costs and so on. If it aligns with the state and some of them, I feel like it makes it easier for us, frankly, so that's where I'm at.
It could be a lost lead, or we could have a sale.
Well...
A sale on death certificates, yeah.
Well, and it's a time, it's a time of, you know, you've got, I'm just looking at the birth certificates, but first six months, but I'm looking at death certificates, 10,210 copies, original, there's only 2862. This is in 2016, I'm looking at. So that means 2,862 death certificates, people, Marion citizens in Marion County that passed away were requested, but there's 10,000 copies, so that's, you know, it's almost five copies per. So you're talking about somebody who has had a family member passed away, and now we're going to charge them 125,000, excuse me, for five copies. So you got the originals, 25, and you've got four, five more copies, is another $125.
After my father's death, you need a whole bunch. It was, I had to come back and get some more, it might have been 10.
Right, I'm sure there's some people here that only needed one, right? Because they didn't have insurance or whatever it is, but there's people that, like you just said, that are going to have to have 10 of these things, and they're going to pay $250 versus now they're only paying 200. So I guess that's what I, I'm challenged with. Sorry, Mr. Chair, but it's just, never mind.
So the only legitimate thing you have to do is read the places we'll be together in the coming week.
Legitimate, my conversation's...
Thank you, Rick.
My illegitimate...
You've been so kind.
All right, so this afternoon, or at noon, we have a Woodburn, Marion County meeting at Luis's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. And then a CCTV taping at 2:00 at CCTV Office 575 Trade Street in Salem, Studio 2. Tomorrow, Thursday, 9:30 to 11:30, Department Elected Head, Elected Official Meeting, Commissioners' Boardroom, 5th Floor, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. That's followed at Thursday, the 2nd, 2:00 to 2:30, a work session having to do with risk, rules, and protected leave, Silverton Conference Room, 5th Floor, 555 Court Street Northeast. Then at 3:30 to 5:00, and I'm going to apologize now for missing this, I think very highly of it, Chuck Sibberton's retirement party in the old Detention Commons at 3030 Center Street Northeast in Salem. He's done a great job, and I really enjoyed working with him. Friday, 9 to 12, SOAR Graduation, Schumacher Community College, 4000 Lancaster Drive. Monday, the 6th, 8:30 to 9:00, Calendar Review, Silverton Conference Room, 5th Floor, 555 Court Street in Salem. That's followed at 9:00 by Management Update, also at Silverton Conference Room, 5th Floor, 555 Court Street in Salem. That's followed at 9:00 by Management Update, also at Silverton Conference Room. Tuesday, the 7th, 9 to 11, Work Session Having to Do with Economic Development Strategy, Commissioners Boardroom, that's on the 5th Floor 2, 555 Court Street. Tuesday, the 7th, 6:00 to 7, a Marion Resource Recovery Facility Tour of the Burner and Brooks at 3680 Brook Lake Road Northeast in Brooks. Next Wednesday, the 8th, our next Board Session here in the Senator Hearing Room, 1st Floor, 555 Court Street. So, well, let me just start one. I usually ask, but we're not going to sing, but happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Were you going to tell us how many you're going to get?
Will you still need me?
Oh, really?
Yep.
The idol where it goes, 64.
Now, Beatles must have thought that was old way back then, but they're older than I am, so it's okay.
Yikes.
Yeah, I know, really. It's pretty bad, isn't it?
My sister.
One more year till Medicare.
You just brought up a story. My sister Jenny, I don't know what happened, it was like the first karaoke ever in San Francisco, we were at for a convention and she started singing that song and I'm still embarrassed. I think that's why I thought about it. Anyway, big birthday plans?
Not really, but.
Everybody doesn't come?
But not to dinner. Work.
All right. Gee, we have to make this special somehow.
Well, my daughter sent me the most beautiful video this morning, so.
A video?
Yeah, which she stayed up late putting together. I'm very upset out of her for that.
Put it on Facebook where I can see it or anything?
It is on Facebook.
Okay.
It's on my timeline. Yeah, and my husband couldn't figure out how to get to my timeline to wish me happy birthday this morning, so I had to actually help him with that.
I don't know if I know I'd do that.
It's part of being, he's 64 and a half, you know, so you got to give him, cut him some slack.
Well, I'm just going to see if I can get on the, oh, there it is, Janet Carlson and six others have birthdays today.
Is she singing?
I don't know, I haven't got there yet.
Can you wish her a happy birthday for me or something?
I like your picture though, it's got Brock in it.
It's a pretty, it's a video, it's beautiful. She put a song to it and everything, she's got all these photos, yeah, it's really pretty. Yep.
All right.
And we had an event on Friday that you missed, but it was wonderful. The giving people a second chance.
Oh, yes, I saw some of it.
Yeah, it was good.
I'll make a contribution still, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you.
Well, I will, I just forgot to, because I wasn't there. I had something legit, oh, yes, Senior Service Meeting in Tillamook.
Right.
It was legitimate.
It was legitimate.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
I've heard all your arguments.
It was just about perfect.
Yeah. No, we had a record turnout and everything went according to schedule. In fact, we were a little bit early. Carrie gave the keynote. I want your notes. It was just amazing. You gave such a good address, I really liked it. So, in fact, I've been thinking, I've been trying to remember the words as I've been milling around here, so it was great. About mental health?
You usually have someone, I don't know if testify is the right thing, but give their experience. Did that happen? Was there somebody there that's been really benefited?
We, you have to watch Jill's story, that's the...
It's on the, is that on the website?
Yeah, it's on, well, it's on Marion County's YouTube channel and we're going to be, and it will be on Community Services has a page, but we're sending out a newsletter, Jolene's putting the finishing touches on it and it'll have a link to the videos as well. But instead of doing, you know, usually we have like three or four or five people that we feature in a video and then we talk about the services. This time, we kind of talked about the problem in the services and then we had a 20-minute video about Jill and it was really a good video.
I've told this story before, it's been four or five years, I'm not going to say names, but I had a, it's a young man, he's my age, associate from high school and stuff, who had a tough time and he came up to me afterwards and had to reintroduce himself because I just didn't even recognize him. And he said, "This program and that person saved my life," so that got my attention.
Yeah. Well, it turned out Keith Jarman was her parole officer. That's the one I knew about and so, that's the one I asked to be interviewed, but then Anna Whitlock came up to her at the breakfast and gave her a big hug and then sent me an email and said that she'd been her PO also, so it was like an honest, you know, everybody's favorite person, so.
Yes, yes.
So, that was pretty neat.
All right. You hiding anything? It's time to get it out.
No, game seven tonight.
Oh, that's a good one, isn't it? You know, I fell asleep at a five-hour game, I was so tired.
It wasn't five hours.
No, the one two nights ago.
Sunday night.
Yeah.
I just couldn't.
Yeah, I did too.
My cousin was yelling and he said, "Are you watching this?" And I didn't answer, but.
Yeah, I fell asleep when it was like 11 to 8 or 11 to 9 and then I saw the score, was it like 13-12 or something?
Yeah, next minute, so I missed all that, but I got the, anyway, this will be an exciting one and I'm so happy because you know I'm boycotting football, so.
So, who are you rooting for?
Well, the Dodgers. Now, you're going to, okay, it usually goes.
That's what Christians rooting for.
Mariners, Yankees and, but Dodgers are the best. I like Puig, I'm sorry, he's colorful. I'm not happy with the tongue stuff, but, yeah, he's the guy from Cuba.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he collected stuff, yeah, but man, he can hit it. If you just be serious, he's a damn.
So, I grew up, you know. I grew up down there. In fact, my first baseball game my grandfather and my dad took me to was at Dodger Stadium and Don Rysdale pitched.
And Sandy, cool fact.
Well, yeah, they were, they were there at that time, you know, back in the early 60s, what, they won the World Series in 63 and 65, so I was just a young kid, but my hero growing up was Willie Mays and so, I became a Giant fan.
Oh, that probably went over good in LA.
So, I've never really kind of got rooted, you know, Angels and Giants were kind of my team and so, I've, but, but the Angels have changed their name so many times that I'm not too loyal to that. The Giants are my team. They're terrible this year.
I should, I could root for them too, you know, they haven't won like forever, ever. I guess it's never.
Who?
Houston.
Correct, they've been in the World Series once when they were in the National League.
And of course, with all the hurricane and stuff, I can be sympathetic, but made my choice.
A good, a good friend of mine who was a counselor at Sprague, he's passed away now, but his son is the, what do you call it, the pastor for the Houston Astros, the chaplain for the Houston Astros.
Oh, really? Didn't know they had one.
Yeah. Edelbrock is his last name, Kevin Edelbrock. And, yeah, he's been down there for a while in Houston.
Hope he makes us some good looks tonight.
So, I kind of, I'm rooting for Houston.
Okay, anything else, all you've got me, got, yeah, I'm saying that because I'm on vacation and I like it. All right?
Have a good vacation, Commissioner.
Plan on it. Anything else? Then let's call this meeting adjourned.